Does anybody have questions on that? I don't need a motion.
If there's no changes to the minutes of the meeting, a common motion to approve is presented.
Is there a motion to support? All in favor?
Aye.
None? Bills and payrolls? What? Anybody have any questions other than that on the bills? The motion?
There's a motion.
The motion again?
Support.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose? None additions to the agenda?
I do have two additions to the agenda. The first is number six, and that is to approve Ruby Slario as deputy clerk for the purpose of taking minutes in the interim of retirement.
Number seven?
Number seven is recognition of Dana Stumpke for 29 years of service as clerk and CFO for retirement today.
Any other public comment at this point? Three minutes is allowed? Anybody else had a public hearing? If not, we will move on. Kevin Glaz here on permits. We're outside, hopefully. Would you like to address the boards here?
Yeah, but if you guys want to look at this or not, this is the board pipe that we'll be using. What we're looking for is to do the same thing that the practice has done for years and years and years, is to put the septic across the road if deemed necessary by the health department due to later sort of the lot constrictions and wells and everything else. You know, Mark's neighbors and everybody down the road have the septic across the road. He's getting singled out probably because I pulled a permit for this and they come here with awareness, I don't know. But I just want my customer to be able to have the same thing as what his neighbor's got. He built his house, two houses actually, purchased the land, put the septic in, and in accordance with what the health department wanted and actually managed it, getting everything away. Let's see. And this isn't just a Kevin Wham, Mark Polk thing, this is collectively all the should wait in county. You know, it's every township, it's every person that needs to have this put in in order to make, like say, you know, the health department's on board with it. With the short notice, I wasn't able to get the supervisors from the rest township, which even though Mark says in Mullet, I'm not sure who the Mullet supervisors, but just so everybody's aware of, but you know, there's a lot of money for people building these nice houses. That revenue does go to the townships, the governments, the counties, everything else, you know, minus the, what it does for the lakes and everything else, you know, so. You know, in the past, I've gotten county road commission permits to do the boring back when we used to trench across the road back in the early 90s when my county took over, he said, "There's going to be no more trenching, you have to bore these lines." The county road was not allowed trenching, so that's what the practice was for years and years. We would get the permits, you know, wait for the county to come out, you know, and it would take a little bit because you guys are finished too, but it's not like they did. I think they just pretty much come out to make sure that we didn't trench across the road. They didn't take witness points, they didn't check gaps, you know, that type of stuff. So, you know, this line when we bore it, it's going to be eight feet deep in the road. So, we do that for two reasons, to protect from frost and also so we don't have to mess with utilities, you know, the gas lines usually go four feet or three feet while you're electrical. We stay deep, so you know, you guys have a hard time getting out, putting two inches of gravel on the road, let alone undercutting eight feet to get to this line, so I don't think it'd be a hindrance to put these in, so. You know, I guess just the precedent has been set, you know, a long time ago that this was a regular practice, so I don't know why we're even here today to discuss this, but we are just because of common parent. And then, you know, like in the last couple of years with all the internet getting installed, there's more drilling machines pulled behind pickups than our lawnmowers, you know, because everybody's drilling across roads for this internet, a lot shell over the what we're doing, and impacting the road a lot higher up, so there we are. Just want to get your thoughts on this so we can get this moving. My customer is aware of this meeting and everything going on, and you know, we're going to put these tanks in, and of course, we thought the health department wanted, and I guess if we have to shake the elevator, we will, so. The drilling people stopped right around November, and it's not yet going, so.
Well, it was kind of just declined per policy because we're not, I mean, typically we don't want to see that in the road, but as Kevin has stated, you know, things are changing as far as the health department is concerned, they don't want them along the lakes. I mean, there's got to be some better solution, I mean, is like a per no tolerance policy as far as putting these across the road, maybe we should check into some other counties statewide that have policies on the books and see if something's got to be changed. I do agree with Kevin, it's kind of a waste of time, I mean, how many, how many times has it happened prior that guys have just bored and not contacted us, and he's kind of our scapegoat at this point to see, you know, if we can get things moving in a different direction, because, I mean, yeah, they've got work to do, we want to protect the road, but at the same time, the health department says, "Yeah, go ahead and do it." So, we need to maybe see some, see about something different anyways.
We want to be good stewards of the lakes, too.
Absolutely.
You've got some examples here from other counties?
Though, I reached out, other road commissions to see, this is Huron Pines, I looked at one of their presentations where they're doing testing around the lakes to try to figure out where there's nitrates and stuff going into the waters, so I know, I talked to a former employee at District 4 Health Department who's now Eagle representative, you know, there's a big push to try to clean these things up, and lots and more applications for these things. Dana and I looked back through the file, previously there were permits approved for things like this, I believe it was the 90s that we found that those permits were approved, and from talking to former manager and Dana, there had been some issues, things installed improperly or done road projects that caused issues. I met with Kevin out on the sites along with Mr. McGregor, we talked about concerns and keeping them deep enough and making sure there were double wall pipes and stuff like that if it was to happen, but I wanted to think about other concerns and comments. And the biggest one is, right now, there's not anything really in place for private owners of these lines in the road right of way, which this one would be. And of course, safety issues with anything like septic fields that could be compressed from trucks or wells that are within the road right of way for the purpose of road runoff and salts and things like those, all got to be considered. But the biggest thing that I found in these is, I think Mackinaw's example that you have in front of you, they use the same CRA 100 permit that we use customized in Mackinaw Township, that they allowed this, but they require a covenant agreement basically from the property owner to be filed with the clerk and registered to deeds that would tie whoever buys those properties to those septic lines, and Mackinaw actually requires them to subscribe to mistig, whoever buys those in the future. Dirk did not have the cost, only what the person told him the cost was, he didn't have it verified, so I, my understanding is that could be costly, there's, any utility or public government or anything like that that puts these in the line would have liability insurance to cover those things in the road right of way. As far as our project go, I don't think if it's installed at a six, eight foot depth double wall pipe, that it would be an issue for us, but there's an example in there from Mount Morantzi County that they installed one. Their solution to marking the line in the road right of way, was at the edge of the road right of way, they required the permitee to put a sign in there that said buried septic line, so it's a permanent posted sign there to try to mark. Within a year, utility contractor came in, did boring and cut the septic line, so now there was the issue of who's responsible for it, and there's septic going into the road right of way, so. It has typically been since the 90s, it looked like something that the road commissions denied when the permits came in. It's the policy to keep those things that could be detrimental to the road or the road commission out of the road right of way, so I think it's a policy that can be revisited. I would like more input from all of the parties involved on it, and for you guys to have as much information and myself, but Kevin is trying to go through a project, I give him kudos because he actually applied for the permit and reached out. I personally have met with a gentleman on another issue, gone to his house, and he was all proud and told me about his septic system that is this septic system that no permit was pulled and it's in the road right of way, you know.
Well, again, I think we should be good stewards of the lakes and come up with something that is, can be used, whether it be an eight foot depth in double wall pipe or can have a cost for that permit, at least that way we know, you know, where these are. I don't know how we record it, I mean, it is a, it should be a liability issue if it is hit, or something that, you know, that the landowner has to pay for that repair.
I think the way that I have a copy of this covenant agreement, I didn't make one for everybody, but my understanding of what that one is, it was then in the deed that the property owner, whoever buys the property, be aware that they were going to have to be liable for that line, you know, as soon as they bought the property, that.
Yeah, it should be a yearly cost to maintain that.
That is what Mackinaw County Road Commission did, I think it was Mount Morantzi's that they, their solution was to permanently post the sign there, that there was a buried septic line. My personal opinion is that if it's a deep enough depth and the proper type of thing, then it would be, I'd be very cautious, though, when we make this consideration, I mean, we get a lot of applications for water wells and septic fields and things within the road right of way, especially there's an issue that was brought to my attention about a raised field that's within the road right of way, that then one of our plows hit the raised field back in the 90s, and it was an issue to the road commission, so.
Right. Any other commissioners got a time out?
Well, it's just, I think we've got to work with these people, I mean, however many years ago, what was down there was maybe a cabin with a trench system, and then you build a large home. What are we supposed to do, put them in an outhouse? They're portage on for the rest of their days, and I don't, we got to work with these people, I think, so.
Is there a way to run tracer wire with that, that pipe?
Yeah, there is.
The, I think the question, Greg, though, comes, who is going to do the mistig with the tracer wire, that's the.
At eight feet down, nobody's going to see the line, and then back to that double wall, you know, the gas lines aren't double wall, they're held a lot closer to the surface.
Is this considered double wall?
No, he's talking about concentric pipe on the surface, so you take a pipe and put it inside of the pipe, which is very costly, so you've got gas mains that are just, that is gas pipe right there, they don't have it in double walls, so if you're putting something two, 300 feet to try to get another pipe, pull through a pipe, it's pretty hard to do, so, you know, I think that the double wall, we do it sometimes just for frost protection, so you've got airspace, you know, put like that pipe into a four inch or six inch pipe for concentric piping, so it helps with the insulation and the crush factor, but that's down in the water table on this particular project, and I think doing a double wall just adds extra expense to something that somebody's already had to get into, another type of fine property, to put the septic down, to make a nice house to generate revenue for the county, you know, I mean, it all, money was what rules the world, and if these people aren't willing to make nice things, I mean, we all would be sitting here because this would go around, so to put a liability with adding more costs to something, I just, I'm not in favor for that either. When everybody else, the gas companies and all that stuff start doing, then it's a septic line at the end of the day. As far as the line goes, you know, if you put, if you put a sign here, a sign down there, you know, it's not across from each other, I don't know if that's going to do any good or not, so it's just something to mull around or something policy did or whatever, so, you know, it is what it is.
Yeah, because if you get a double wall and you get water in it, you got more damage than if you just.
Yeah, if you're going to hit, if you're going to hit that pipe with a double wall, whatever you're digging with is going to take that one out with it, so not a big issue.
Well, I think we need to come up with a policy and a permit fee, I'd like to see something come back to our next meeting.
I think Mr. Wallace here for asking the board for an exception to our denial for his permits, so we continue with this project.
Yeah, I mean, I think if a policy's going to be set, you know, just because I was the one that pulled the permit, this guy's not going to wait for this, if you're going to set a policy, you can take your time and take it over the winter and write something up, but this gentleman here.
This will come back in two weeks.
Okay, two weeks, yeah. Like you said, in November, this line's going to already be installed, so.
We're looking at first week of October here.
Perfect, that'd be fantastic.
I think we need to get something more concrete.
It'll be a case by case situation anyway, so not they're all going to be different.
Yeah, this is just a septic line, not a septic field, the septic field's way off into the woods, so this isn't anything to do with that, it's just a septic line. And there's, there's two of them, one going across the road as a diagonal, and the other one just a bore shot across the road to the house, so.
Okay, can we do that? Table it until our next meeting and permit fee and depth, basically, have to do it and a type of pipe that we.
Perfect, if I require you to come to the next meeting, can I just get a board on it, because you get in here and taking this time off in the morning, especially this time of year is a little tough, so.
I can watch, no.
Okay, then, perfect, thank you.
Okay.
Perfect, thanks, guys. Dana, congratulations, I'm going to go tonight. See you.
All right, let's move on.
Um, no one finished business? So, the next agenda item is the continuation of River Street, just all, I'm handling one back at a time.
Please go ahead and say it.
Yeah, they're all the same. The, the information is there for you with the petition, the notice for publication, correspondence that we've received, the posting for the public hearing, and the prior discussion that we've had, that I did put in here in the packet, the meeting change date was originally set for another date, and we changed it to that at Mr. Grundy's request. I think the only comments that I have in regard to what you guys already have is, basically out of the 99 feet right of way, to just kind of do the math, it would leave 70 feet of road right of way, 49 and a half feet on one side and 20.5 feet on the other, 33 feet is our typical road right of way, that's what we usually go off of from the center of the road. We do have road right of ways that are needed, road right of ways or so, that are 20 feet, some even less than that. The, the parts of the road that we're talking about would be basically the parts of the road that would be parking and sidewalk, so I think that's important to know. Historically, when we moved through with projects, that those projects are agreements that we do with the township for the maintenance of those areas, a lot of times is the townships, it's in the road right of way, but non-motorized parts of the road, we do agreements in the streetscape down sound, that's an example of that, that there's, historically, we've done agreements with the township to take care of those, so what I'm telling you is the maintenance of the travel part of the road, the motorized part of the road is, usually are the road commission's biggest concern. The part that Mr. Grundy's asking for, I think, is more of the parking and sidewalk parts of this road, which the board should still be considered with the public interest of those areas, but I just want to give you that information. This area is plotted, so Mr. Hen wanted me to point out in this meeting that the road commission can only abandon the public interest in that plat. There is still private interest in that area, and it was plotted as a road right of way. It was plotted as a public road right of way, so the road commission only has the authority to abandon that public part of the road, not the private part that each plat owner, person that owns property in that plat would have. And it is his thought, his opinion, that if the road commission did abandon that part, that the plat should be amended, amended for it to actually be official. His comments to me is that our interest in that is for the public interest, and probably at that point, if we abandon that part, you know, it would be up to Mr. Grundy and to continue through with filing that and going through the motions to do that plat amendment. As far as the requirement to do that, he wasn't sure whether that was something that we could require, it would be a resolution of abandonment, and if, if that would be something that we would put with that resolution, he did not have an answer whether that would be something we could require or not at that point. My concern as a manager is we have just received requests for septic line in the road right of way, we receive requests for other septic in the right of way, and usually when we deny those things, people will pick up the paperwork for abandonment, and basically, are we going to be setting a precedent to go forward with abandonment every time that somebody wants to put a facility in the right of way? That yes, you made this exception to abandon this. Abandonments for a portion of the road right of way, I can't find an example, in Shboygan County, it's usually the road right of way is abandoned, so Mr. Hen did comment that he thought that it would be acceptable to abandon only a portion of that, but again, he thinks that it should be completed through a plat amendment. So, I think as far as the statute goes, I heard comment earlier, my understanding is the board policy, at least the board's thoughts are that we want information from the townships before we make these decisions, and Mr. Hen's opinion was that if the board so chose, that we should have a public hearing on this one, and we did, I think the board needs to be open and upfront with all these things, and I think we should consider development going forward with, you know, possibly making things better in the area and private and public interest in these issues. I mean, both are very important, and it's a very important decision to make for this board and weigh all the possible outcomes of what we're doing today.
Do we have any further questions?
Well, I've gotten several emails over the last month or so, and I haven't had any one of them that was for it. My opinion is I don't think that we as a road commission should abandon right of way for someone to financially gain from it, this, our decision doesn't stop the project, it'll still continue, there'll just have to be some adjustments made, that's my feeling.
I am not in favor of giving up public property for special interest, that's the bottom line.
Yeah. We should give up right of way.
I think, you know, the board wants to see improvements in Tuscarora and support them from time to time, but giving up road right of way is not something that we take lightly, I mean, we've denied it before, we've been requested by at least in the 15 years I've been here, three or four other people wanting for us to ban road right of ways, and we've denied them, and I think if we approve this one, we're going to show precedent, and we will be asked to do it again and again and again, so I have to agree that I don't think we should give up road right of way. So, I will, do I have a motion then to?
As the applicant, might we have just a very brief response to what's been presented here?
Well, we've already had that public hearing.
Well, I understand the public hearing, we're saying that where the applicant is put in the petition, so it's a little bit different than the public hearing, just a brief response to what's actually been presented. Thank you, I do appreciate that. I guess what I wanted to point out, you know, is I think that what I'm hearing is we don't want to set a precedent, I totally understand, but again, this is a rather unusual situation given the width of the road right of way, which is very unusual, it's not typical, and also, while it's been 15 years, you know, that there've been other requests and they've been turned down, I do think that Indian River is at a point where development is trying to move forward, and you're kind of at that cusp of, you know, are you going to have some more development and improvements or not? And I'd be happy to share with the board the RL photos going back 10 years, that show that this area is simply a rather unmaintained gravel area that is not something that is really, I guess, beneficial to the area, other than again, a few parking spaces that I'd have to argue, you know, we need tax base to bring more public parking in, and if there's not going to be any give at all on this, we're not going to get that tax base and more developers to be able to come in, and some of these very small parcels that are difficult to work with, and actually get something onto them that will make some money, that can make it work for the community, so I wanted to bring that up, and also with regard to the statute and the public hearing aspect, just for the record, the hearing by statute is actually only for the interested parties, which are the people that own or occupy land adjoining the parcel, and those people are in favor of this, the Halls and Mr. Jacobs, they've written letters that they're in favor, and then the statute also says it's simply the other government agencies, which is the township, MDOT, Eagle or DNR, and railroads. So, understanding of course the concern that we always want to know what the public has to say on these things, I just want to make clear that in terms of what is the public, the public is supposed to be the people that are actually on this roadway, and not have one person here trying to solve the parking problems that are endemic to everywhere in Indian River, so I'd ask the commission to consider that, that it. So I'd ask the, the commission to, to consider that, that it, there really is about the landowners that have already agreed, they're fine with it, and the interest is well served for all the public if we can just get some more development and tax base going. Thank you.
Shouldn't have been on time for the first meeting.
Do we have a motion?
With that being said, I'll make the motion to deny.
Support? Motion and support to deny the abandonment. Do a roll call vote. Ginup? Ken, deny. Brown?
Deny.
Deny. Okay, let's move on.
Oh, the next agenda item is the We Doc Road Return to Gravel surface in Monroe Township. They've included here for the board the original letter that I sent to Monroe Township. I did attend the August eighth meeting at Monroe Township at their request as per our policy to discuss this with the residents of Monroe Township, and we have posted the notice that the board will be hearing this today for We Doc Road. I think the comments that I got back from Mr. Ginup was he understands that something has to be done with the road, and they can't afford a alternate treatment. So it is on the agenda for the board as per our policy to make the decision today whether to return that to gravel or not.
Do we have any comments from the board?
I would say since the township doesn't have money to, to upgrade it, that it'd be cheaper for the road commission to maintain, we turn it back to gravel. So I'm in support of turning it back to gravel.
Is this something we would do yet this year?
That is correct.
Ginup, you have any comment?
I think we should do the gravel. We'll save it there anyway.
Are we going to add gravel to that once we do it?
Yeah, well, we, we'll evaluate. We think there's enough road base there to, to be able to maintain.
No, I have to redo that a lot of gravel. And then at, at some point in time, we want to pave that or anticipate of paving it, then cost, we have to.
The, the.
Feel the cost of doing this?
The, the reason that that is put in the policy is that returning to gravel is often pulverizing the road, returning to gravel is often the, the first step in a project. So other road commissions that have done this found that townships came back and, and either asked for or weren't supportive returning to gravel with anticipation of doing a project. So the road commission ate the whole cost of the pulverization of the road, and then the next year they came back and said, let's pave this. So our policy does state that we can make the decision to include the costs or a portion of the cost of returning to gravel back if, if they turn back the next year. It's really up to them.
Maybe our match, we don't participate in matches.
It, it could be our match, yes, something to that, to that idea.
Okay, do we have a motion? Support?
I'll make a motion. I'll support it.
Motion and support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, goes. None?
The next one is the winter operations conference. If the chair would approve, I think I actually have four. I, I think I told Dana three, but I have four to attend if the chair would consider that correction to the.
Is this a one-day meeting or?
It, it is an overnight one. The room block may be filled at this point, so if you approve, we're still, we're still figuring out whether they will be able to stay overnight or not, or in the same building or hotel, so.
Where's this at?
This one.
Shank Creek.
Yeah, Valer, how, what four members do we have?
Mike LeWey, Carl Jenna, Sean Nelson, and Matt Drake were the four that asked to go.
I'll make the motion for those four to attend. Support? Motion and support by Ginup, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, goes. None?
Information just came in for the twenty-three communications workshop on November eighth of twenty-three. Really don't know how many would attend at this point, but asking for the board to approve up to two to attend this conference if we can work out the schedule to attend.
This is communication?
It's a communication workshop. I think Greg and I sat through one of the presentation at the Northern Conference that's similar to this one, talks about dealing with people, how to etiquette for phone conversations, those types of things. One of the ones that was covered in the past was social media platforms and things of that nature.
We've got to be for like former positions and office staff receptions.
I, I, I went before, I think it would be beneficial to a foreman or basically anybody that's going to have communication with the public.
Payroll clerk, clerks.
We.
Front line right there.
Do we have a motion to?
I'll make the motion for.
Two people that were checked.
Of Massachusetts.
Support? Motion and support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, goes.
Okay, the MERS conference, September twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, twenty-three. Dana was originally, the board originally approved for the payroll clerk and clerk to attend this conference. Dana, with her retirement, does not want to attend at this point. She asked me if I would like to go. It's kind of a short notice, and I had some other plans, I would, would attend, but we thought we would leave it up to the commissioners to attend if any of you would like to attend with Angie. I think it's important for Angie to go. There's a lot of information in that conference that has to do with retirement for our employees that's in her position, it's going to be very important to get. I, I will attend if, if none of you want to go, but thought we would reach out to you and see if any of you would like to attend that.
They have these conferences annually, don't they?
They do, yes.
It's important Angie goes to it. One in October, so.
I'm not going in at this time.
I, I just will leave it up to the board then for myself or an alternate, if I get some, another member of staff, perhaps a new clerk or.
Yeah, I, I don't think that we need to have you there. You've already got prior commitments, and if you could think of somebody else to join Angie, that would be your opinion.
Next item is if the board would entertain appointing Ruby Solario as deputy clerk in the interim of the clerk's retirement.
I make that motion?
Support. Motion and support by Ginup, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, goes.
Um, the next agenda item, I will turn over to, to your pocket to.
We have, Dana is retiring after twenty-nine years as our clerk. We're going to miss her. Seemed like every time I told her she couldn't go before I go, it wasn't, she's made a choice, but it is fine with me. She's been a real asset to this road commission for twenty-nine years. Whenever we wanted to buy something, we never asked the manager, we asked Dana, do we have enough money to do it? And she always, she always took care of us. I mean, we had the, the money we needed to get by, even in tough times, so we're going to miss her. To the great employees. Thank you.
That concludes our new business. We have incoming correspondence from Crasif, which we receive, our, our Crasif receives a statewide award, a workman's compensation award, July state maintenance, township meeting minutes from Kohler, Burt, Monroe, and Safety Day is Friday, October thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three to receive and file those and for information.
I'll make that motion. Support? Motion and support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, goes.
I'm going to go all the way down to the managing directors' report. Greg and I attended the Northern Conference, good information there, I, I believe, and I think probably the biggest thing that I got out of it to report back to the board is Eagle's new brine regulations. I think the date that they gave us to kind of look out for where we'll be seeing those is October twenty-four, so I, there's no guarantee that they won't come up with something before then, but right now their, our brine situation is still covered over, under the previous rules that they had in place prior to the announcement that they were going to change these, so we're going to continue business as usual and keep monitoring to see what other road commissions are doing in preparation of these coming up. I did talk to the, one of the suppliers for the organic options of what to use instead of mineral well or oil well brine, which is made out of organic beet material, so many road commissions have, a handful at least, road commissions are considering changing to that. A handful have already changed to that, using that product, so I don't think that's a solution for our dust control, but it's possibly a solution for our winter maintenance brine. The volume that it would take for dust control, in my opinion, would be extreme.
About the beet juice, they, they used, we started.
That's, that's what this product is. It's organic made out of beet, yeah, so.
Is that a lot more expensive?
Yes. It is, it is, it is considerably more expensive than what the mineral well or the, the oil well brines are at this point, but if, if the permits and the, and the training and stuff that would be required under the other one, basically what their original proposed plan was, every time that a person had brine application to go to mix the salt, to make a slurry, they were considering that a application of brine, so we would have to, we would have to have each one of our drivers as a licensed applicator, kind of like our contractors are for putting oil well brine if we chose to do so right now out on the roads, so.
They don't care about the salt, does it? They do the brine as well?
The, the regulations are as soon as it becomes a liquid, that's what they're looking at at this point. There are, there are regulations for putting salt down and best practices and stuff, but the liquid is what they're, they're looking at right now, so. A lot of other good information there at the Northern Conference. Shane left me a list. He is, Rob set up, and he'd probably give you an idea, but they're going through CPR training this morning in Sheboygan, so that's where Shane is, his first day in CPR training. He left me basically still doing mowing, drainage, they're working on gravel road projects right now at this point, so that's what's going on in Sheboygan, finishing some of the prior projects, Rivera has, and just started. Our chip seal project is completed, and right before the meeting, the paint contractor called me and said they'd be able to, to get up here probably today and start painting those chip seal roads, so that's helping. I need to get, I got the permit signed, or the, the application and, and contract signed with Eagle for the Paradise Lake culvert structure. Been in communication with your engineering as far as getting some borings and stuff set up to figure out what the ground structures are there. Eagle in return sent me the initial stuff to do the first quarterly report, which is due real soon, so I'm going to be working on that. I'm going to have to invest a lot of time into township Pazer reports for our township meetings in November, and I've already kind of encountered a little bit, I've been forcing myself to do, we had a, a slip from an employee, so I tried to take care of some of the paperwork that Dana would normally do, and a few of the things that she normally would do, and makes me even appreciate her and the job that she did here even more. So I want to reiterate Mr. Pocket's statement that I will miss her and all that she's done for me as a manager and to help me learn here. Turn it over to Foreman.
We've been through great roads, a lot of friction and action every day.
Tropey roads look real nice.
Got to be nice.
New York Black Railroad, let's see if they got the coves in with their two chains in.
Shop's going well. We've got our new old grader switched over with all the equipment from our old old grader for tower that should be leaving today to go to tower, in fact. Maybe we get our old old grader for auction here before long. Truck built to come along nicely, Schultz is doing a nice job. We've got a truck delivered, I don't know if we had that for the last meeting or not. One of the two trucks, we took the truck and trailer, we pulled and took down to Schultz, they're going to build a second truck for us. Equipment should be pretty much all down there now, and things are going well in the shop.
They have one almost done now, or?
Really close. They're waiting on a bounce section. Mike Baker is en route to take some parts down to Schultz. Unfortunately, hit a deer in Taylor, just a little bit ago, but he's, another guy's going down to pull a bumper out of the tag, so hopefully they can continue on and take parts, but yeah, other than that, things are going quite well.
So, do we have a estimate of value what that old grader is going to be worth?
I got ahold of Chris Overmeyer, and he sent one of their guys up. I think we're about forty thousand, and I'll talk with Matt, there's a couple options of potentially, you see if Cat wants to sell it for us. Whatever we want, we'd get, I don't know what they would get off commission versus auction, I don't know how, how the market is for graders right now, but yeah, right around, right tight to forty is what they thought.
How many hours is that in that?
Fifteen thousand. Tight. Still in pretty decent shape, though. It's not bad. Makes somebody a good unit for quite a while.
I think that's it for Foreman.
All right. Any other public comment at this point?
Yes, Damon Roger Jacobs, we still got problems with that Indian River bridge. It shakes Arby building around there for four, five hundred feet. Every time a truck, a truck goes across there, it's slowed it down. You can feel the whole building shaking, and this isn't just mine, it's everybody's building. People cross the street, it's got a well that, that they end up having to take shoulders on it all the time because it's shaking all the underground, this is, must go three, four, five hundred feet down, too. This isn't, it's also up and down, so it enter, it's interfering with everything. To build new buildings on, on that structure with all that vibration, when the old bridge was in there, we never had any of that problem, since they put that new bridge in there, we had nothing but that problem shaking everything around there. You need to fix it.
Rob, is there some more natural patching we can do around there?
Biggest thing is when they hit the bridge, the approaches, you know, are uneven. A little more patching maybe?
more patching maybe?
They fixed it, it didn't work.
No, we can build it up a little more, there's still a bump there, and that's what it is, is when they hit the bridge, that's where you get your road, like, so if we can get the approaches even back out again, should help.
Right.
Okay, anybody else?
Jeff Holson, County Commissioner for District One. Just a couple things, first of all, I want to congratulate Naaman for his perception. The other thing is, I know the US 23 project, Macam City for next year, the MDOT project, but are they putting a center turn up, turn lane, going up that way as you?
The, previously, the only part of that project, MDOT had reached out to us to, through our state maintenance, part of that to do some tree work through there. We put that out for bid and MDOT asked us to reject those bids, so the only part of the project that we actually were involved in was possibly tree clearing, which we did not award the bid, so the, the project itself there, what is going to be developed and through there if it goes forward, they, they actually have rejected their initial bid. I don't know if they've accepted one now, but so far the project is, you know, continues to go and be changed and things, and I don't have the information in, in being MDOT question. We, we get a number of questions and stuff because originally we did some notifications to property owners and stuff because we were possibly through the road commission, we're going to do tree work through there, but that was denied, so.
And then the other thing I just had, I think I talked to you before, a little complaint or suggestion from a constituent about that Shore, but Holiday, something in Shore Road, just, you know, just checking the trees, hope they're all.
I, the, the gentleman that you sent me the email for, Shane Redman, he was not here today, our foreman did meet with him, I know that they have talked.
I had to solve it all with him, sorry. Thank you very much.
Ruby, I didn't ask you, sorry.
If you call the Gaylord Office.
Oh.
Because they have changed the original plans a few times on 23, some of the plans are online.
Okay.
But if you call the Gaylord Office, they are really helpful and they'll update you where they are at this point.
Okay, great, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Do you have anything to add to?
No, I can't, no. We're good, we're talking along.
Yes.
Donna, this time I'm going to talk as a member of the Vert Lake Preservation Association in the armed SOTD committee. I listened to the discussion about our policies project, and I have a couple of concerns. First of all, the SOTD committee will be working with state municipal lawmakers to establish some best practices. We're of course looking at, we're protecting the lakes, the rivers and the streams, and the first news alert that will be going out this winter will address, it'll be a subject 101, because a lot of people don't understand their subjects. One of the concerns that I had when I listened to the discussion is the fact that people are not wanting to allow boring under the roads. And you know that best practices is that for a subject system, if you have to replace your field, not to put it in the same spot. Unfortunately, around the lakes, the lots are small and there isn't room to move your subject field, and that happened actually with us personally. So a lot of the land opposite beside the road, especially in my subdivision, Chippewa Beach, has been degressed for subject use only. So you have lots across the street from homes that are, that's degressed and nobody can build on it because it's degressed for subject system. The only way to utilize that is for main under the road or subject type under the roads. So I would like to have the road commission take that into consideration when you guys are having your discussions about what kind of policies you might be able to change or to work with homeowners in this situation, because it's going to be coming up more often and more often. I know the LPAs, right now there's eight, nine hundred, right around nine hundred members, and our intent is to start educating people on what best practices are and again, work with state level lawmakers to implement some ideas and things to help people in state.
I got a question, do they recently have a vote out of all the lake doing surveys?
Uh, Burton and all, yes.
Do I saw that? Thank you. Yeah.
One of the worst things that they could do with this SOTD, pardon, subject system and things, they need to outlaw frigging putting fertilizer on these people's lawns because that's putting the lake worse than any subject system unless it's giant draining strictly into the lake. Fertilizer is one of the worst things you could put on your lawn, it drains off and runs out into the lake. All the rocks and stuff on that lake originally, I've been here for, you know, sixty-five years, and the rocks used to be clean on that lake, and you go out into the lake today, and this goes back twenty, twenty-five, thirty years ago. Most of all your rocks out there have got scummy stuff on them, never used to be that way at all, but when you get more and more people out there and they think you've got to have a nice, pretty, real green lawn and they put fertilizer on it to do it, probably half or fifty percent or seventy-five percent of that runs off into the lake, and that's putting the lake a lot worse than any subject system unless they're doing direct cookout.
Thank you. Great, commissioners?
Well, that's Larry Road, it looked like it come out pretty good, are they done with that now?
They just have a minor punch list, but predominantly.
I just want to wish Dana good luck in her retirement and whatever she decides to do in the future.
Likewise, have we had any communication with the city in our?
After asking you guys last time, I've just been waiting. I can't, I can't reach out if you'd like me to.
Let that dog leave.
What are we, what are we doing with our water though, I mean, is our?
I, I do believe, this is just from observation, nothing official, but I do believe, you know, in the days that it's not raining, I mean, I think the, the fountains have helped evaporate some of that, you can, Dana and I were talking that you can see on the rocks.
I can see that line in the rocks when I, I looked.
And I mean, that's like three days now of no rain, so three or four days, so it's, I was amazed that the other day when it was really cold, I was considering whether we should leave them running on cold days or not, but with the warmer water and you could see that, that mist of evaporation coming off, kind of like a fog coming off of it, so I think it is, it is helping evaporate the water.
Nothing on the grants, don't know anything yet?
No communications at all.
Do we have any date? That's all I got, again, we're missing Dana, we'll find a replacement soon.
Do we have any possibilities?
We had one interview and two more interviews set up for today. I have, I attended a cogitate training, but it was mostly payroll and clerks in Emmett County at the beginning of this week, and I have reached out to CRA and then had the clerks there, I did have a few indicate that they'd be willing to help us with training or possibly some short-term solutions that I'm investigating at this point, so I'm working through those possibilities going forward. MERS has some requirements that for a little while I can't ask Dana, she will help, but I know she would, just out of her generosity, probably answer some few questions and stuff if I was desperate, I know that's the, that's the case there, but anyhow, we're working on it, we have two interviews set up for today, so.
That was my question, thank you so much Dana for everything, we're really going to miss you.
I want to thank you for your dedication, like everybody else, saying we will, we will be missed, it's going to be hard to replace you, so hopefully we do find somebody close anyway, to get started with.
Okay.
Other than that, I just told Rob earlier, they've been doing a lot of work on Troll Bridge Road out there, it's looking really good, haven't had any calls other than River Street, so I think they've played pretty well.
Okay, if there's nothing else to come before the board, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you folks.